Order is six thirty-five. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to our public.
Let it stand.
One nation. In this.
Liberty.
Justice for all. Okay. Can we, uh, let's look at the minutes that were sent out, the revised minutes. Um, I didn't, I saw one very minor typo. That I'm sure the spell check is responsible for. On the second page, on the top. Left, oh, six lines down, the word intervene.
Okay.
Do you see? Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Got it. Okay, so that just needs to, to be corrected. Otherwise, I didn't see anything else. Does anyone else have any comments on the minutes?
No.
If not, can we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
That was Justin. And second?
Evelyn, I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the minutes are accepted. The chairman's report, I would first like to, on behalf of the commission, I would like to congratulate Fred Petrosi on his new position. And wish him well. And do you want to tell everyone what your new position is?
Oh, sure, Beryl, and just for everyone's information, I am the retail operations manager at Sikorsky Financial Credit Union. Um, and with this position, I will be in charge of the operations for the eleven banking centers in their network. Very excited about this opportunity, and uh, thank you for your help and support, everyone.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
Good luck. Uh, the second thing I wanted to bring to your attention is, um, I sort of a congratulations to Massimo, who is nominated to run for office. If he makes it, we will be losing him on our commission. So I have very mixed emotions. Anyway, good luck, Massimo.
Thanks, Beryl. I believe Justin is up for election as well. Is that right, Justin?
That's correct, yes. Yeah, we'll see what happens. Thanks, you too.
I'm losing my whole commission. Yes. I got such good people. Massimo, I know what Justin's rushing, running for treasurer, but Massimo, I don't know what you're running for.
Board of Fin- Board of Finance.
Okay.
Justin, I didn't know about you. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to leave you out.
No, that's okay. That's okay.
Um, and then finally, if you have not been to Stop and Shop, you are in for a surprise. I was there for the first time in several months because I haven't been going anywhere. And I was absolutely shocked. It is, it is beautiful. It looks like it's twice as big as it was. And they have taken a lot more products. They've added uh, products to their inventory, and it was, it was just a pleasure to, um, to shop. Long, long overdue. It feels like one of the, the super stop and shops that I've been to in other towns. Okay, that's my report. Let's go to the director.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I have got to pop into Stop and Shop. I was there when it was half done, so I thought you're reminding me to pop over there. Uh, I wanted to start by thanking everybody who was able to attend the July ribbon cuttings. We had two. Uh, the new Japanese restaurant Izumi, um, opened in July. Uh, it is a cute place. Uh, I was there again this week for Restaurant Week, getting them ready to participate. Um, it is, it is doing very well. Uh, they are very busy. It is in the plaza where, uh, one twenty-three Pronto in Mexon Main is. Please stop in, and uh, it'll be nice to have them participating, like I said, in Restaurant Week this year. We also had, on a community development note, we had, uh, the Community Gardens ribbon cutting. If you have not been up to our Community Gardens, please go see it. It is fantastic. Uh, it is being well-used. Uh, it, I was there in the beginning of the season, and the season opened late because of the renovations, but I was there and the plants were this big, you know, that were there, and now they're, you know, huge bearing fruit and so forth, and there's all kinds of, of things that people are growing. There's a, a plot that I showed Gia and some of the folks that were there, that they're growing potatoes. There's other tomatoes, squashes, your traditional vegetables, flowers, herbs, uh, corn. There's all different types of things being grown there. Uh, and it's, it's really done very, very well. So I think it's something really special about our town. It helps people with their food bills, with their nutrition, and it's a great social, mental health kind of thing to get outside and to do that. Uh, we're going to do down the line some programming related to, you know, the gar- to gardening and, and those kinds of things, uh, that we promised to do with the grant. Uh, there is a smaller, uh, garden that will be created over at the site of the existing senior center. That will be a smaller, like ten-bed or so, so that seniors can do some gardening right on-site at the senior center. And, uh, they can also do some classes over there. Anything done there, should there be a move at some point of the senior center, it will be able to be moved because we're using these large containers. Uh, so both of the, uh, gardens are fully ADA accessible. Uh, i- i- and they're just really, really well-done. I have to thank the Parks Department, particularly Dimitri Paris. He takes a lot of heat, you know, we understand that, as we all do, but take a lot of heat, but he really works hard, and he was a great partner getting this project done, and his staff, I don't know all their names, but they did a great job. So I encourage you to visit it. We are in the process of lining up a number of ribbon cuttings for the fall. So I want to give you a date now. You'll be getting an invite shortly from me. I'm just working on some content for the invite. Ruhi Fertility and Prenatal is a practice, a Trumbull resident who's relocated here from Miami. She had a practice in Miami. She ma- she still does, actually. Uh, it is a holistic practice, acupuncture and other types of ancient medicine as it relates to fertility and, and so forth. Um, you'll get a write-up in the invite um, in terms of all the work that they do out of their practice. But they have set up their space. They just opened the doors, uh, soft opening. They are in the building where Rob LeBrandy's karate studio is in Long Hill Green. I used to call it the Mace Building. I don't know what we call it now, but uh, they're in that building. Uh, the, the event will be on Friday, August twenty-second at one PM, and I'm hoping as many folks as possible can come and see the unique uh, practice that they have and work that they're going to be doing with our community. Uh, I'm in the, I was over today, um, for quite some time, visiting with, um, Intrinsic Health Source, which is another business in town on Tree Foil Drive. She had a practice in Monroe for fifteen years. She moved her practice um, late last year, I believe it was, to Trumbull. And then in addition to moving her practice, she expanded just now, in the last few months, to add a new space. So what the practice is, it's another, um, holistic services, massage, um, skin and facials, um, stretching. Um, there's mental health counseling within the practice. There's yoga. They opened, uh, new areas, so they're on the second floor in one, one oh five Tree Foil. But they opened a whole studio on the ground floor, which is new, so they've expanded their business since they've come to Trumbull. And that's a yoga, sort of, Pilates. They're even doing ballroom dance out of there. So it's a really cool practice. Uh, it, the people that are involved with it, so there's, there's, um, Janine, who is the primary business owner, but each of the practitioners are their own business within the practice. So it's multiple businesses coming together to collaborate and provide holistic services for people, but it's very nicely set up, very well-done, and she's looking forward to introducing particularly her new expanded space to the community. So I'm working with her on a number of things related to her business. And one of the things people don't know, but Gia knows, but maybe you don't, do know a little bit, I do a lot of business technical assistance, one-on-one. I meet with our businesses, not just businesses that are new, but businesses that are open, expanding. I help them to think through their business. I help them, link them with free resources and, uh, support. So, um, that is a regular practice of our department. Uh, maybe G, the, the one pager we have for businesses that shows all of the business technical assistance we provide. I mean, let's get that out to the commission. We might have gotten it out a long time ago, but.
I think we sent it out.
Yeah.
Last meeting, but I'll send it again.
Yeah, let's send it again, just because it's something you should keep on file, so that if you're visiting businesses as part of your ambassadorship, you, you let them know, you know, we can give you more copies if you wanted more copies of it. But this one pager kind of identifies the kinds of supports we can give businesses. We do a lot of that ourselves, but we also hook, hook up our businesses with the Small Business Development Center, SCORE and all of that. And some of you who came to our Resource Fair, I don't know, um, if anyone, Justin was there, Fred was there, um, Evelyn, I think you were there sta- helping us, actually.
Yeah.
I don't, Leila, did you come later?
Yes.
Yeah, with one of your, I think somebody, did you bring somebody?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, my memory's pretty good. Beryl, I don't know if you were able to come to it. I can't remember, but it was great. It was at the library. SBA brought in all these free resources. I've had three or four now follow-up businesses from that, that are Trumbull businesses and/or trying to open a business in Trumbull that I met there, follow-up with me for technical assistance. So that was a really great event. Um, Gia helped out a lot getting everything set up, so we appreciate that very much. And that was back, I think, G, in May, May twenty-first, something like that.
Hmm.
Um, and we talked about it before, but it's worth reminding you. And then as we leave a, an event, seeing that people are following up, I mean, and saying, wow, I can't believe all of this is available. So this is more messaging we have to get out to our businesses in terms of how we can help them. We are also going to be, so in addition to the, you know, we have the twenty-second at one PM already scheduled. I'm working on Intrinsic Healthcare, Health Source. I'm working on theirs. We're going to be doing a ribbon cutting for the new, uh, the Pocket Park in Long Hill Green. When that is finished, it'll be finished over the next few weeks. We probably won't have the ribbon cutting till the end of September because Dimitri has some perennials that still have to go in the beds and a few other bells and whistles. As a companion effort to the ribbon cutting in Long Hill Green, I'm working with Freiborg. They want to do a thank you to the community. Some of you were, I think most of you were on the commission when they had an accident with their truck and it burnt and crashed. It, it was a huge loss to them as a business. And they were reluctant to take help, but they were desperate, and they did a GoFundMe page and raised, you know, enough money to, to allow them to buy a new truck, and they're very grateful. And since then, they have wanted to do a, a thank you type event for the community, but we kind of wanted to wait until they got back on their feet with everything, and the Long Hill Green area was kind of buttoned up a little bit further. So stay tuned. They're going to be doing some type of a thank you, which will involve, you know, a give back to the community and our ribbon cutting, and I'm hoping it's at the end of September, okay? Um, and I'm also working on, uh, some of you may have seen the news article that Gia attached to your handouts for the Take Part Theater. I thought Shanice did a great job on the article. Uh, and that, that, it should be in your, um, I think it's in this month's package.
Yeah, it was in the package.
Yeah, so, um, that youth theater, uh, is, is in three thousand square feet of the former Jeff workspace. Another very different kind of use for the interior space at the mall. You know, the other Holly Lane Mall article that's in the, um, the package didn't really discuss, I don't think adequately, the interior space, the story of the mall. I mean, that space was largely vacant, and it is now filling up. So we have the youth theater in three thousand square feet. H&R Block is still there. There's a dance school that moved in. I think many of you know that. We talked about it last year or so. Um, there's also, uh, Fire and Ice. It's a card game entertainment-type business that's open in the afternoons and evenings, and they sell board games. They have memberships. People go there and play. And if you've ever been there when it's going on, it is full. They sell out, and it's, it's sort of a new thing, and then when they sell the new board games and stuff like that, when they come available, it's just a very different kind of business. So we've got a number of different kinds of businesses. There's still a little bit of space. The, the liquor store had expanded and take some extra space. But we have a piece of the Jeff workspace still available, and then the former jewelry store space still available. But largely, that is filling up inside with very different kinds of businesses and activities. And the rest of the mall is, that mall is performing well and has the big box stores associated with it and other things. So I just wanted to kind of tie those articles together a little bit that are in your package. Uh, so stay tuned for a discussion about when we will cut a ribbon for the youth theater. And I have two or three other things in the pipeline, um, that I'll talk about in future meetings. Um, I want to go to just some updates as it relates to development. I think you know that we're, Vicki, to s- our, our first selectman and I are going to be giving a briefing to the town council at their October meeting. I'm hoping that some of you will be able to tune in for that. That'll be a sort of comprehensive update on all things related to the mall, the mall property, the mall area, even beyond the, um, the actual mall, okay? So I hope you'll, you'll tune in. I mentioned last, no, we didn't meet last month. I mentioned in June uh, that on the planning and zoning agenda for August, there would be some zone regulation changes for the mall and mall area that were recommended as part of the study. Uh, those, we could, I could really use, if this, if this commission is inclined to do so, support on those zoning regulation revisions. They are absolutely critical to three things. Um, holding the value of the property, incenting development and redevelopment and investment on the property, and allowing us to join the Connecticut Development Authority. We cannot join without the regulation changes. Um, and that would open up the area, the district, to, uh, low-interest financing and grants and technical assistance that could be part of a future public-private partnership, which we will need for that property. So it is my feeling that, um, there may be, uh, at least one person um, on planning and zoning who isn't quite, doesn't, you know, hasn't, you know, maybe got their head around this. So I think that we're trying to educate. I'm trying to educate you. You've been receiving regular updates on the mall. You've had a briefing on the study. You've been to meetings, all of these kinds of things. I think that it would be very helpful for this commission to, from the economic development perspective, to discuss how important it is that these regulations get put in place. I want to be clear that the regulations still give tremendous oversight to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Everything that happens on that property will still be subject to planning and zoning. It just allows, you know, us to advance the vision and set the stage from a zoning perspective. There will still have to be site plan applications and all of those approvals, if anything were to come forward. So the Planning and Zoning Commission is not being taken out of any loop through those revisions. The revisions aren't that significant. It would add an ability to do some senior housing on the site, and there would be some other regulation revisions rela- related to uses and to, um, some of the coverage issues, um, lock coverage issues on the property and others. If you have any questions before that meeting, I'd like you to talk to Rob LeBrandy, or if you'd like to talk to even, uh, Maggie, who's, uh, one of our zoning consultant on the, on the consulting team, I can arrange for that. Um, so I want to pause and ask the chairman if you feel you want to take up a discussion about a letter, testimony, s- or both, a letter from the commission, and I think we did this, um, Justin, when we did, um, one Tree Foil, I think you showed up and actually gave the testimony and the record, and then the, the letter also went in. And I always think it's good to have someone there, you know?
Right, alright. Um, do we have some discussion, some comments from any of the commission members? Any of you have some questions or?
I, I think it's, I think it's a good idea, if, if everyone's up for it, to do a similar letter in, of support.
Anyone else?
I also support that. Thank you for sharing that information with us.
And I support it.
Rena, are you able to give a, just a quick overview of what the changes are, or is it?
So, what, what I'd like to do is, did everybody get the link to the mall study? There's a whole memo attached to it with all of the changes. I think it would be helpful to look at that first, and then what we could do, if, if you want to, uh, I don't want to create a special meeting, but I could set up, you know, two at a time, just a briefing um, on it, if you wanted to have a briefing. But basically, um, the, the regulation changes are going to be in two places on the agenda. The, the Main Street corridor, which is not part of the mall property, currently has a planned office overlay zone. There are some changes to the planned office overlay zone. They're not drastic. We're not going full-blown commercial there because the community, you know, rejects that, doesn't want that. They want balance there. We also are looking to spark some, you know, improvement to that corridor and investment and, and so forth. But we're not looking to compete head-on with the mall retail space, so we want complementary uses along Main Street and redevelopment that's positive, and that creates a better gateway, but we don't want, you know, to necessarily create a competition for, for that. Okay, so that's, that's quarter. On the mall property, for the most part, and the memo lays it out pretty good, the major change, the major change is, is the piece that talks about the, the ability to do up to two hundred units of senior housing. It doesn't say that. That's not how the language reads. It allows for so much of it to be done in so, uh, so much coverage on an acre. That's how it's written. But it's basically allows for up to two hundred units of senior housing, that's fifty-five and older, and it does ask for a ten percent affordable requirement in that housing if it were to be built. That doesn't mean it's going to be built. It means it allows for it. It's an opportunity. Um, one of the other things it does is calls out this plan as sort of the master plan for that area, meaning that projects that are proposed, you know, have to be in the spirit of the ma- master plan, okay? The master plan is not so detailed that everything has to happen exactly like the master plan, but it has a basic vision, th- th- there's a, there's a clear, um, intention in that master plan to go from just a mall in the middle of a parking lot to a district, right, to a, to a mixed-use design district, which is what the original, uh, zoning from two thousand eighteen says. It takes that a step further. Uh, so those are the, the major changes. There are some minor changes as well. We did a lot of the rezoning back in two thousand eighteen. Uh, so those are the, I can, I can have another person that's really good, um, is Jim Cordone. He's our land use attorney. He's been on, in all the regulatory discussions. He can also, uh, answer any questions, and you could contact him directly, or I can set up you, an opportunity for you to contact him. Because I, 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 I know the intention and the basics, but I'm not a, I'm not a regulation, land use regulation person, so I want one of the pros in that to explain it. Um, I'm giving you the layman's version and why we're doing it. Um, and the, the basic things that we'll achieve by doing it.
I, what is your pleasure, commissioners? What would you like to do about this?
Can I just ask one more question, Rena?
Yeah.
If, if the zone changes were done, this doesn't, they would still, a property owner would still have to go to planning and zoning. So we're not going to lose an opportunity for maybe like a conditional approval with infrastructure that's, that'll offset our costs.
Say that last part.
Of condition. So if you have a conditional approve, if there, if someone does go to planning and zoning, and there's a conditional approval to maybe cover some infrastructure costs.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That, that's still a possibility, right?
Oh, yeah. An entire application, no matter what, has to be made to planning and zoning for anything that changes. So if something happens inside the mall, it doesn't necessarily come to planning and zoning. Uh, if something happens that changes the structure of the mall or the mall property, no matter what, with this zoning or without it, it, it has to come in for a whole site plan application, and it's subject to all of the things that, any application, including conditions, that, that any application would have to meet. That's an important thing for everyone to understand, including planning and zoning, you know? Um, it, it's really just the regulations are in place that could enable somebody to come forward with certain types of development. And the regulations, um, allow us to use the real estate for infill development like the plan suggests. It sets the road, the pa- the, the pathway to do that. It doesn't, it doesn't in no way eliminate an application from planning and zoning.
Any other comments or questions? Clarification? No? So what is your pleasure? Would you like to have a, a motion? That we send a letter?
I'll, I'll move that motion.
I'll second it.
A second?
Yeah, Massimo, I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Alright. So, uh, Rena will work with you on the letter?
Yes, and, and so the commission's aware, um, David from Stantec is going to be, um, producing a letter. I believe the BRB, the Bridgeport Regional Business Council in Trumbull Chamber is going to be doing a letter. We discussed it at our meeting last month. I'm going to follow up with Dan. The meeting's on the twentieth. So I'll be putting together some content that can be edited or changed or whatever, but, um, to get, to get people off the ground. So, um, it would, uh, and it, if anybody here is inclined to come to the meeting, I do think that this is probably the most important economic development um, action to set the stage for future investment, to hold the value of the property, and to help us leverage, um, public sector resources with the private sector. So it, there's probably no more important, um, thing for economic development happening right now. So I really, it would really urge if P, I know it's, it's sort of tough because it's, it's in the middle of the summer and people have vacations and stuff, but if people can come to the meeting, I think that would be great.
When's the meeting?
It is the twentieth of August. We can send, um.
Any please? Mm-hmm.
We can send, it's in the town council chambers. We can send in, um, uh, a note to everybody so you know when the meeting is. We can actually send, um, I don't want to send a calendar invite because then, yeah, no, we'll just send an email note, just letting you know that date, and we can put the date of the, uh, ribbon cutting in there, even though you'll get a separate invite on the rib- ribbon cutting, just so you have your dates on a list.
I can add the meeting agenda in there too, so you have an idea of where those things are.
I can add the meeting agenda in there too, so you have an idea of where those things are on the docket.
That's a great idea. There are other things on the docket that I'm gonna explain next, so that would be a good idea, G, to give them the whole agenda. So, thank you for your um. Action, for your action and and is if it's okay with the group, I'll work with Justin. Like to get something drafted and he can, you know, get it out to people or we can get it out to people. And they can react to it. We just have to be careful again as a reminder that we don't react in one group email. Because that can constitute a meeting and we don't wanna do that particularly for something that could get appealed down the line. So um I I don't think it will, but it could. So uh again. October council meeting, full briefing on all things related to the mall area and I'm hoping you can come to that too. The next thing I wanna talk about is also um on the planning and zoning agenda. You'll re- well, two things sort of relating to that. One thing is that there is a workforce housing. Proposal on the planning and zoning agenda. This is for Reservoir Avenue. The commission turned this proposal down. A few meetings ago and then the developer came back with a more aggressive proposal. Which is what, you know, we, they had been working with us for some time. Telling us, you know, we're going to do something there, you know, we don't wanna have to come in with an eight thirty G, but we're going to if we don't get. So they'd come in with a forty-eight unit workforce housing um with thirty percent. Uh affordable units within it, all uh one and two bedrooms. Uh and the commission turned that down. Then they came in with a hundred and I think it was fourteen units. Thirty percent affordable under the eight thirty G affordability requirements. They were coming in with that. Um so as a result of that, you know, they they kinda said. Look, here's your opportunity to come back to the table with us. So I believe they're coming in now and with forty-eight units. Only one bedroom units, I think. That's what I heard most recently. That they're all one bedroom units, but none of them are. Affordable now, they may go to ten percent. The reason that concerns me is we need to get new points and in order to get new points to work toward a moratorium. Units have to get their certificate of occupancy, so they have to get approved, built in certificate of occupancy to be occupied, right, to in order to count. Toward a a moratorium. So we've been working for the last few years to assess where we are with a moratorium. And how many more points approximately that we need and that can change a little bit each year. Though every year that goes by, we have to sort of reevaluate that because stuff comes off, stuff goes on. New housing units are built, a percentage can shift and change a little bit. So there uh uh there may be a CO missing on an old unit that we aren't able to find, so we have to take them off of our list. So there's a, there's all kinds of situations that go on. But generally speaking, we have a sense as to how many points we will need for a moratorium in the future. And in order to get there, projects have to be built that have affordable units that meet moratorium points. So it's, you see Fairfield's been going, you know, there's a million proposals there, there's all kinds of housing development. And I know we get a lot of complaints about how many apartments are here. We have nowhere near the number of apartments are going up in other suburban towns, not dissimilar to Trumbull. So we've been trying to hold the line. We don't want any big scale projects if if we can hold them off. Uh but we do need enough to be able to work toward a moratorium so that, you know. We can evolve in a more balanced way. So this particular proposal will be back at planning and zoning. Um I'm hoping that the Planning and Zoning Commission can compel them to at least do ten percent of them as a set aside or maybe more. Uh but we'll have to see what happens because of what their experience was and the denial and all of that. This thing's going back and forth. Another, what I think is good news, at least for now. Um maybe some others won't think it's good news, not on this commission, but I mean that are involved with the transaction. You'll remember me talking to you about the Avery Abrasives property. You know, we certainly do need good developers of senior housing, but. I'd said from the very minute we found out that anybody was even looking at that property. That that was a commercially viable property. It's in all of our planning studies as a commercially viable property. And they wanted to put senior housing there, four stories. Not much off the curb, you know, set not set back very far. Uh and all the way flanking the corners. Uh there was also another project that had been in the works for two years. Behind there and what I said was, both projects are not market viable. They're too close, it's too many units to lease up at the same time. They're not gonna both be market viable. One will knock the other one out. And I was more supportive of the, from a, from a economic development perspective, not because of who they are, what they are. I don't even. Know the people personally. These are development teams. It it's just from an actual economic development, land use. Uh performing for the grand list and for what it is we're trying to accomplish in the neighborhood. The other property was behind or adjacent to twelve Cambridge, no- non-producing property for our grand list. Set back from the road, probably won't develop as anything else um other than something like this. So that project got its approval. Think in June, yes, in June, it got its approval. They're working on their engineering drawings and all of that. As a result, the other Avery Abrasives, uh the group that had that under contract. Basically said, well, the mar- there's no market. The market's shifting and it's not market viable. And that's not new news to me. I told them that from the beginning. It would have saved a lot of um aggravation on their part, money. And sort of aggravation for the Avery Abrasives folks who could have been marketing the property differently, but they backed out of the deal because of the market. And so that's oversimplifying it maybe a little bit, but that's exactly what they said. And they said in the meeting that we had with them, when I was telling them that we didn't feel this was the right use for that property. It uh that they admitted in that meeting that that I was right, that they that they're not both marri- but they kept going forward. I guess they thought they'd get in ahead of the other, you know, whatever. But anyway, they backed out. They're now marketing that property again and I've talked to the broker. Told them that we don't wanna see housing on that corner for all the reasons that I continue to tell people. Um about other uses there and, you know, all the other activity in the neighborhood. We really don't need a commercially viable. Property being turned over to housing. We have other properties that are being targeted for senior and workforce housing in that exact neighborhood. Okay, so I just wanted to close the loop for you on that. Does anybody have any questions on that? Okay, um I wanted to go to the gas station at Lake in Maine because there's a lot of people, what's happening, what's happening? Nothing, nothing bad is happening. They just got their demolition permit on the twenty-ninth of um. July and there they get a window from the state. In terms of when the demolition, they have to notify people and they have to demolish within the window. So it will be demolished upcoming. They now have all their permits. They had to get all of the utilities pulled. It it, excuse me, and all of the paperwork in, in order to get that demolition permit. And they were waiting on one more shut off and some other, some other um. Paperwork to finalize that. It's not an easy process to get every utility pulled from a property. And to do, and then you also have to make sure if you're, you have to do your hazardous building material assessment and all that stuff, which has all been done. It's all been reviewed. The permit was issued and they will demolish and everybody will remember there's a. Full approval in place and has been in place to redevelop the the station, the gas station and the convenience store. Um slash deli, okay? That's what's happening with that. Um one tree foil drive, I mentioned, this commission supported that development. It is still under appeal. Um not much else to report at this point. It can't proceed until the appeal is uh concluded. So, or it won't proceed, I should say, until the appeal is concluded, so I'll keep you abreast of any advancements. But I think that will play out over the course of the next, you know, twelve months. The Saint Joseph's property, I wanna jump ahead to talk about an event. Um you may have seen our flyers. We worked with the Department of Labor. Uh to host in in the Trumbull Chamber, uh Joe Scalzo, who works there, he was also helpful to me and to Lori Lynn Chatlos, who. Organized the event. Um we did a job fair at Saint Joseph's Manor. For the employees uh that were being uh separated from their their jobs. We had thirty-one of our employers there. You know, great turnout from Trumbull businesses and from businesses in the region and there are definitely people got hired, some on the spot. And since then, uh I've talked to most of the employers post-event. They were very happy with everything. Um Jay from Kylie, who's on the Trumbull Chamber board, he came, he he had a great experience and he's hiring. Um from the event. Uh so that's, that just has to do with the workers' side of it. I wanna talk a little bit about the property. If folks are patient with me, I wanna just explain to you the property and what's happening. So uh I might have explained some of this in our last meeting if you were there. Uh but you remember that Genesis was operating the nursing home on the property. They are not an owner of of any property. They were a tenant on the property. So there's a nine acre parcel of land that is owned by a private equity group. They had Genesis as a tenant. The diocese, so they own the vertical, the land eighty-seven percent plus of the land. There's some covenants on the remaining thirteen percent of the land related to the diocese property. But eighty-seven percent of the land and they own the vertical of the manor. The vertical of the convent in front of the manor and the vertical of the little lodge in the back. The diocese owns the vertical of the parish house out front. And the Theresean Tower behind the manor. Theresean Tower is occupied. Those are apartments. They've been there for years. They're going to keep that. And hopefully that can be integrated into whatever happens with the property. There, we are, I am, our first selectmen is, we're all in touch with the principles of the property. They are taking um offers on the property. We have sent, I've sent personally seven people to them already, whether it was a development group, three local groups. Um two groups that were not local and one nursing home type provider, okay? That's who's I know of who's been sent to them. They've made contact and they're looking into the opportunity. We'll see what comes of that, but there's a tremendous opportunity for that. We've talked extensively about what we don't wanna see there. We don't wanna see a major, large-scale apartment complex, okay? There's already a large-scale building there that will probably have to come down, but we would support a senior housing type thing. And a combination of village-style development like is in the rest of Long Hill Green. Or a a mixed-use type of thing with with, you know, moderate scale. You know, like over Franco Gianni's Housing Above and the retail on the first floor commercial, some combination of a village setting. Or a fully village or uh senior housing integrated with the village setting, something like that. We don't wanna see a large-scale housing development, rental housing development. The school, um that school area um and the high school, you know. You know, there's a feeling that, you know, and then traffic over there, there's a feeling that that would be overwhelming. For that area, even though the existing building has two hundred and ninety units in it, that that is five stories. Um Theresean Towers is is already occupied, so it's it's traditionally been a residence. Residential uh development a de- with density, but it was um servicing people that were elderly. So we're gonna see, we can't, we can only influence, we can't control. I mean, if somebody wanted to come in with some aggressive proposal, we would have to deal with it. So far, it appears that the people that we're discussing understand, you know, what the. What the community wants. They're gonna, they're trying to be supportive of who we send. To inquire, we're telling everybody that we talk to what it is we don't wanna see in this, okay? That's as much as we can do, because we don't, we can't control if somebody comes in and tries to propose something. People have a right to propose things. We have to then assess that, evaluate that and figure out if we can get it mod- if we support it. If we support part of it, if we can get it modified, but if somebody's over with them, if there, if if it's something that we don't wanna see, then we would have to. You know, we would have to take other approaches to try to uh forward what the town wants to see in the Long Hill Green Village District. Remember, we have a guiding document for that area since two thousand eighteen that we're following. So we're tw- we've put out there what the town wants to see there for a long time now. So we're hoping that any proposals that could come forward in the future would be in keeping with what we wanna say. Having said that, this is not an inexpensive development site for two reasons. If that building has, the manor has to come down, very expensive demolition costs. And disposal of the materials, um you know, the 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 building materials will be very expensive. So that tends to drive what you can do and what you, people are willing to pay for for the property and so forth, so. That's to be continued. I'm just trying to keep you abreast and give you some understanding of the situation. Uh the town is very active in doing what we can to influence it in a good direction. Um knowing that we don't control private property, right? Um and that they can propose things and we will have to deal with it. Um don't be confused with the property that is Carmel Ridge. That's a separate parcel. Of sort of eh eh one fan, one story, they're one-story units. Uh that is still owned by the diocese and that is a separate parcel. Um and I don't at this point um know what the long-term plan is. It's diocese has for that for, but as far as I know, I don't think they're. Gonna do anything with that in the short run. Is there any questions on Saint Joseph's? Was that helpful?
Yes.
Are people following me? Okay, um. The Cub Tech project is still happening. Um there was an extension granted to Satcham Capital because they're dealing with getting um the colonier. The settling with the um one of the tenants that was there. They're dealing with it, with how to settle that situation. So there was an extension that Cub Tech agreed to, but uh it it everything appears to be moving forward. It just delayed. Um the Marriott, you saw the article, the Marriott will go under renovation. Um probably eh uh early sometime next year. Um they're going to do some smaller things. Probably before that, but then they're gonna go, they're doing their planning and designing of what they're going to do now. Their decision-making, planning, designing, and I guess they'll be looking to line up their, whoever's gonna work with them on that. Um so we have been in touch extensively with the GM there. I've put him in touch with the chambers. Uh Fred, I think you were on some of those emails of all the surrounding towns because they wanna really. Get the word out about who they are, what they're doing, um what's gonna happen with the property. I do expect to have somebody from the Marriott, just give a brief, brief hello and. Couple of comments at our breakfast um in October. So uh you'll hear a little bit more about that before our breakfast. So that's a good segue over to events. Our breakfast is scheduled for October thirty-first, which is a Friday morning. John Trainer will be speaking. Um he used to be with People's Bank, People's United, and and then now he has his own practice. Um he's an economist, he's excellent. I don't know if anybody here knows John, but he's very, very understandable. Very good, he's gonna talk, you know, sort of nationally, regionally. And then Connecticut and, you know, in Connecticut and then regionally about the economy, what's happening, what some of the future. Things to watch are and and I think it'll be really important to hear from him. And I think you're gonna think, you're gonna like him in terms of the way he presents. I've heard him quite a number of times. Um we're also gonna have a few, I mentioned the Marriott, we might have a a another. Um you know, our first selectmen obviously is gonna give. Um you know, our first selectman obviously is gonna give her comments, but we might have another um brief. Person involved in the agenda, I'm working on something, uh so that's October thirty first for whoever can make it. Um October eleventh, we're having, we're working with the Trumbull Chamber. And uh Four Corps Financial, which is one of our companies. That we moved in a few years ago to the Trumbull Corporate Park, Joe um Violetta. He sponsors Restaurant Week and other things, he's a very good guy, Fourth Annual Senior Health Fair. Um the two coordinating team is Joe Scalza, uh myself and Joe Violetta, and I think Fred, you're supposed to be on at some point. Uh and we were talking about where to have it, he has had it outdoors at the corporate park years past, and they've had several hundred people come. But we decided this year to move it and we didn't wanna spend a lot of money on the venue, so I I reached out to the owners of Holy Lane Mall. And they agreed to allow us to, with just a certificate of insurance, we can host it there. So it'll be in some of that Jeff workspace, the corridors are very wide there and they lend themselves to that. And I think it'll be good for all the businesses that get brought in to be um, you know, to have their tabletops, to see the mall. You never know, to see the space, um and just to get more foot traffic in there, um and there's, it's good, you know, I encourage you to come. Um Joe does a great job uh with the programming and um you'll hear more about that as well. Uh Gia, you may wanna talk about Restaurant Week, I'm still working on sponsors and the team is working on getting the restaurants. But Gia's pretty much handling the rest of it, so if you wanna.
Um yeah, so Restaurant Week is going to be October third to October tenth this year, it's a Friday to Friday, like usual, eight days. Um like Rena said, she's working on some sponsorships, we've already secured a good amount this year. Um we have started outreach to our restaurants to see who will be participating this year. Last year, we had twenty-one participants, I believe it was, and that. It's about the number of the the past couple of years, so we'll hopefully be there, if not have a couple more. We have a few new restaurants in town this year that have expressed interest, um Antonio's, Natural Kitchen. Um Izumi, they've all expressed interest in participating, so hopefully they will. We are no longer charging a fee for the program this year, um so restaurants can participate for free. Um we've suggested that they donate a twenty-five dollar gift card for their restaurant that we will raffle off. We've offered to match that twenty-five dollars with another twenty-five dollar gift card. Um again, for raffle, which will hopefully create additional promotion and maybe get them some new customers, um. So planning and efforts are in full swing for that, um. Promotion will start hopefully um early September, I mean, we've already started announcing dates and things like that, but. We'll do the full swing promotion in September, so we have that full month leading up to the event. Um a- and that's about it for now, um thank you to Evelyn and Justin and Fred for your help on that.
Does anybody have any questions for G?
No questions.
No.
Alright, so I don't really have anything else, there's a lot of other things going on. Um tons of things going on, but uh if anybody has any questions for me, I'm gonna stop there. If there's something that you wanna know about on the business side or whatever that you, I haven't touched on.
Rena, do you wanna mention that we got the bike rack grant?
Oh yeah, so that Katie, um our intern that we talked about, uh she's a Trumbull High graduate. She's at Yale, she she did a um micro grant for us, so five thousand dollars. And it was awarded, I think about a week or two ago, and it will put bike racks around town. So she'll be able to see the fruits of her labor when she comes. She was absolutely fantastic. Uh next month, I'll report a little bit more on our historic rehabilitation project for the the schoolhouse. John Nayer and I are meeting with the Rotary on Friday, the twenty-second of August. Um to get the Rotary involved in that project, um I'll do another update on the Veteran's Center next month and um.
Can I ask you something about that vendor, I know it's a Veteran's Center, but is there any possibility? That that could be linked in with a community center?
So it's not just a Veteran's Center, it's actually what we call a multi-use center. So it's going to be used for civic events, meetings. Uh even the Rotary intends to use it for their meetings, the Chamber will use it, will host things there. Um it's gonna be for rent and lease by the community for events, like so if you wanna have a shower or wedding or whatever. Um there, that that it'll have all that kinda use, and then it's going to be used as a training uh location. For first responders, so it's got already community aspects to it. It's not a recreational community center at all. It is, but it is a community use space, a multipurpose facility. We call it, the Veteran's Center is short, you know, I use it short, it's Veterans and First Responder Center, but it's really much beyond that too.
Um and the other thing is White Plains Road. Is there any point, do you know if they're planning to do anything there on the uh Donardo property?
So I reached out to Peter last week, uh because they have a, they're good to go in terms of that front area. Um they have the go-ahead, it's clean, and they can do whatever they need to, so they took up the tarps and sandbags. But they haven't started the landscaping, he was away, he indicated to me that. When he got back, they were gonna take up the landscaping area there, there was some sewer line work that they had to do. Through the area first, um I just wanna pull up his. See if I have his message, uh just so I wanna be clear, I'm not misspeaking, hold on. Okay, let's see. Uh there's some drainage, uh drainage infrastructure they have to, they have to put in as well, so um. Yeah, I don't have an exact timeframe from him, but I'm gonna follow up, he's away, he responded to me from vacation, but. You know, I think we're pushing that they get that piece underway, just to clean up the front area. I mean, I think tenants, I mean, Justin might be, you know, I don't know if you wanna mention, you know, any feedback you've had from, but you, or if you can't, that's fine, but. I think it's, it's not a good, it's not a good look, and now that it's clean and they're able to do something, I hope they. Clean that up quickly, I know that within the planning and zoning approval, there was a timeframe, but it got. Meleeed because of the put, the thought that there could be contamination there. And the investigation ensued, and then it ended up that there was very little there, actually, um and nothing. Really significant that would stop, yeah, so, but that took months to, so it delayed. Everything, which was okay, they had to go through that exercise, but so hopefully soon, I mean, I know, I'm gonna. Ac- actually talk to Rob LaBrandy in our office and ask him from the planning and zoning perspective, can, you know. Can he push that along a little bit too? Um but, you know, I think they're going to get started on that front area. When they're gonna start on the redevelopment project to the rear, I don't know yet, I know they're working on their plans for that, their construction plans. But I I don't know when that's due to start, they haven't really indicated a start date.
I can actually provide feedback, which is that my answer is always eventually. I just keep, I I keep hearing the question and unfortunately. Um we we just don't know, like, you know, the getting answers is very difficult, so. But we get asked all the time from the center, and the and the answer is eventually.
Okay. I just have people always asking me questions about different things in town and. I thought, well, I'd ask a few questions myself, but I also just wanted to say that the Long Hill Green there by uh Abbey's. It it just absolutely beautiful, it's a hundred percent improvement there, so.
So we wanna, eh eh when it's totally done, thank you for saying that, it's gonna be really gorgeous.
It is.
And we want, you know, them to try to achieve something similar, you know, it's not the same kinda space, but that is like a. A pocket park and, you know, it can softens the whole area. Um we've had a lot of really positive feedback, we've had a few people say, well, why is it spinning? We try to explain that we're getting grant funding to do this, but, you know, there's always gonna be those those folks, but um I think that. They, the 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 contractors have done an amazing, very nice job there.
It really looks beautiful, yeah.
Do we know what kind of uh safety features are gonna be in place, cuz I know we couldn't do ballards, but are are there? Do we know what kinda safety features are gonna be in place, cuz it's very adjacent to a road?
So it's, if you, if you look at where the planting beds are and stuff, they're raised a bit. Um so it's sort of a a natural berm. There is no ability to put fencing or anything of permanent nature in the right of way. Uh so there will not be any kind of fence or anything like that. In fact, DOT made us take down the other fence, cuz they said that can act as like a projectile if somebody hits it. So it's almost more dangerous. So, I mean, people have to use, so there's gonna be plantings that, we're gonna crawl through the planting to get to the road, but. You know, that'll set people back from the road, do you know what I mean? Uh so hopefully they'll use the the more central space. Um and not into the road, yes.
Is um Dimitri involved with that at all?
Oh yeah, Dimitri has been on our project team, he's been instrumental, I mean, he didn't, we we hired out for the work. Um eh there's a contractor selected in a public bid for the work. So he's go- he's also gonna be doing the uh perennial plantings. Uh wh- when that gets done, that's the piece he's gonna do and he's very, very good at it. He has to wait for the rest of the work to get done and he wants to wait till it cools off just a little bit, it's a little hot to be. But, you know, certain kinds of plants and stuff, so. Yeah, he's definitely involved and he does a great job.
He's, he is terrific, I think we have the prettiest eh uh landscaping of any town.
Yeah, he does a great job.
And one last question, uh do you have copies of the region booklet from BRBC?
I have a few, uh I don't have enough of them. So we talked about getting them for our breakfast again this year, we gave them out last year.
Yeah.
We have a little rack that we've put up with stuff and I had three or four of them in there and people have been taking them.
Yeah, I bought one, save one for me.
We could get you copies.
Yeah, I would, I would like to be, is there a way that we could get them regularly, I would, I find them quite interesting.
They only do it once a year, the the printed one, they, one year, they do it in June and we do give it out at our breakfast.
Right.
Um every year, and then we generally have some in the office. But so far this year, we haven't gotten like our box that we usually get, so if Fred can maybe help us get the box.
Absolutely, yeah, my pleasure.
Um and we give them, I bring them to other things, like when I go speak at the real estate offices around town, I'll bring them. You know, I'll, I'll bring them lots of places, because people are interested, particularly Realtors and what's going on in Trumbull, but also, also the area. So if you, I think you guys saw the article we did this year, was focused on Long Hill Green. I tend, I focus on one project, one project area each time I write the article. Um.
Right, so it's a good reminder that we are part of a region.
Yeah.
Not an island unto ourselves.
So another thing that our interns helped with, they were just so fantastic this summer, I I can't tell you, but. The um the BRBC and the Me- MetroCog and the BRBC created a regional economic development website. So I identified, I think, five properties. Uh and we loaded them, our interns loaded them up so that we have content. Um for potential sale or development um up on the regional website. So it's just an extra place that people, cuz we have, if you look at, under my signature, it says link to commercial properties. And if you go to our website, we have a link to commercial properties in Trumbull, as you know, we subscribe to something. It's not totally complete, but it's about as good as you're gonna get, trying to keep something like that up is very difficult. But this is done through um LoopNet, we have a link to LoopNet. So uh this regional one, we have to, it's not automatic, we have to look, eh things have to be loaded into it. And removed from it, that kinda thing, so uh. You know, but it is more exposure, so that's great, and they don't charge us anything for it. So um we can put up to seven properties there, I think we, I think we have five or at the moment, uh.
Alright, anything else, any other comments?
Um I just wanted to second what you were saying about Long Hill Green, it's, it's beautiful, it's, I feel like it's exactly. Where Trumbull um as a town should be going with all of our commercial spaces, so I'm hoping that. It will serve as an example for other developers, um when they, when they purchase and build. Um I I wanted to ask about that with the PHA complex, do we have an idea of like when that's gonna be done?
They wanna be in, they wanna be in li- by late fall, that may move a little bit here and there. But I would expect before the end of the year, they'll be in and it'll be, you know, cleaned up. And um I think the landscaping will be really important there. And luckily, the people that own the property are have, are landscaping people, so hopefully all that goes well. Um you know, cuz I think right now it's a very rough site. Startling, you know, it's startling, but once it gets it buttoned up, I think it'll be well done.
Yeah, I I agree, I think once it's done, it'll add, just add to the entire, that entire pathway corridor. Uh on Main Street, it's just like, it's, it's lovely, once you get to that point where you, you're passing. The Long Hill Green and it's, it's just like, oh, this is, this is the direction our town is going, so.
Good. We've gotta get, we've gotta get our, our Trumbull Center corridor in that direction and it 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 it's.
Alright.
We're working on it.
There's no other business. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second. Do we have to make sure there's no community here or anything?
Is there a community member here, there was, let me just look. There's one attendee, let me just check, Marlene Rossi. Wanted just um our, our person who's staffing the uh from IT, can we just see if they. That person would like to comment? Um is Paul here from IT?
Are we waiting for?
Comment? Um I just have, Paul has to um. Open up the.
I believe the public would be able to raise their hand, but I don't know if we would see it, I'll text Paul.
Paul, Paul, can you hear us? He may be doing two meetings at the same time, so I.
I think so.
Marlene, if you can hear me and if you're interested in commenting, can you try to raise the hand? No, it won't let her. Hmm.
Just texted Paul, so hopefully he'll.
Yeah. Okay, she signed off, so. If she wanted to speak, she probably would've stayed on.
We have.
Okay.
A motion by Justin and who seconded?
I seconded.
Okay, all those in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Opposed, okay, it's good to see everybody and.
Good to see you.
You.
But the next meeting should be in person, so I hope that will happen in in September.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye, guys.
Bye, everyone.
Justin, I'll be in touch regarding the letter.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Good night and good luck.